I'll call this meeting of the Alabama Community College Board of Trustees to order. We are meeting under unprecedented circumstances and via Zoom 500. And practicing social distancing and meeting in accordance with Governor Ivey's proclamation that has allowed us to modify the Open Meetings Act so the different boards in the state and departments can function properly. We've taken extra precautions to make sure that this is transparent and that our operation is open to the public. We welcome all of visitors that we have. We appreciate viewing from any president's staff and any of the public that are watching us now. We welcome you and we appreciate your interest in the process and in the business of the Alabama Community College system that is headed by Chancellor Jimmy Baker. And this board functions along with him. I would like to, at the very beginning, to give special thanks to the legal department and the community college system for their support during these very unique times and having to function remotely. Also, the IT staff, they've gone to great lengths to put this board meeting together via Zoom so we can meet remotely. I'm not mentioning names because most certainly I will leave somebody's name out. But you know who you are and we thank you so much for your commitment. Chancellor Baker has mentioned time and time again that the staff has been willing to step up during this very unique time and this challenging time that we're experiencing right now. So I will go to the item two now, which is invocation and pledge of allegiance, and I'll recognize our vice chair Milton Davis.
Thank you, Al. I have a cross that I keep on my desk and in the middle of this cross it says faith. And right now during this time, we all need faith and not have fear. There's also a scripture passage on this cross. It's from Hebrews 11, verse one and six, and it reads, "Faith is the confidence of what we hope for will actually happen. Anyone that approaches God must believe that he exists and that he rewards those who sincerely seek him." Let us pray. Heavenly Father, as we enter into this holy week, we enter into the passion, death, and resurrection of Jesus. And this year, we do so under extraordinary circumstances. Most merciful God, we come to you in our weakness. We come to you in our fear. We come to you with trust, for you alone are our hope. We place before you the diseases present in our world. We turn to you in our time of need. May the Holy Spirit guide our president, our national leaders, our governors, and the leadership of the Alabama Community College System and community college presidents with wisdom. Bring strength and wisdom to our doctors, nurses, and all healthcare providers. Give knowledge and understanding to our scientists. Endow our caregivers with compassion and generosity. Bring healing to all those who are ill. Protect those who are most at risk. Give comfort to those who have lost a loved one and welcome those who have died into your eternal home. Lord, please stabilize our communities, unite us in our compassion. Remove all fear from our hearts. Fill us with faith, confidence, and your care. Help us remember that out of all the pain and suffering Jesus bore for us, new life emerged, his resurrection. We are reminded that out of the chaos you bring new life. God, we trust in you and ask you to bless our meeting today and help us make good decisions which will enable us to educate our students and train our students and meet the workforce needs of our state. We thank you for giving us your son, Jesus, and ask for these blessings in his name. Amen. Now we'll have our pledge, and I actually keep a flag on my desk. And for those that can stand, stand and salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Davis. Now, Ms. Wilkins, will you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mr. Al Thompson.
Present.
Mr. John Mitchell. Ms. Susan Foy.
Present.
Mr. Matthew Woods.
Present.
Ms. Crystal Brown.
Present.
Mr. Milton Davis.
Present.
Mr. Chuck Smith.
Present.
Mr. Blake McAnally.
Present.
Mr. Jeffrey Newman. Governor Kay Ivey. You have a quorum.
Thank you, Ms. Wilkins. Item four is approval of the agenda. Board members have received the agenda well in advance of the meeting. And at this time, I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Davis. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Brown. Any discussion, any changes to the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. Ms. Wilkins, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Thompson.
Aye.
Mr. Mitchell.
Aye.
Ms. Foy.
Aye.
Mr. Woods.
Aye.
Ms. Brown.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. McAnally.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Motion carries. Item five is the approval of the minutes of our last regular meeting, which was March 11th, 2020. Once again, the board members have received the minutes in advance of this meeting, had a chance to review them. And at this time, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes. Motion by Mr. McAnally, second by Mr. Davis. Any discussion, any changes to the minutes? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Ms. Wilkins, will you please call the roll for a vote on the minutes of the March 11th, 2020 meeting?
Mr. Thompson.
Aye.
Mr. Mitchell.
Aye.
Ms. Foy.
Aye.
Mr. Woods.
Aye.
Ms. Brown.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. McAnally.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
The minutes are approved. Item six, public comment. Ms. Wilkins, has anyone signed up for public comment today?
No, sir. No one signed up.
Okay. We move to the action items. Item seven, academic and student affairs, adult education facilities, physical information technology, and workforce development. Item seven, A1, was on last month's work session. It's to extend the time extension on the advanced manufacturing center at Bishop State Community College. At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Brown. Is there a second? Second by Mr. McAnally. Any discussion?
Al, I think the second was actually Chuck Smith.
Thank you. Thank you for correcting me. Seeing none, we'll move to vote. Ms. Wilkins, will you please call the roll for a roll call vote on this item?
Mr. Thompson.
Aye.
Mr. Mitchell.
Aye.
Ms. Foy.
Aye.
Mr. Woods.
Aye.
Ms. Brown.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. McAnally.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Motion carries. Item two, seven, A2, is allocation of 2019-2020 industry certification initiative funds with Alabama Community College System. Once again, this was on last month's work session. The board members have been briefed on this. At this time, I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
A motion by Mr. Woods. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Smith. Seeing no discussion, we'll go to a question. All those in favor will call the roll, and all those in favor or against, please answer accordingly for the allocation of industry certification funds for the Alabama Community College System. Ms. Wilkins?
Mr. Thompson.
Aye.
Mr. Mitchell.
Aye.
Ms. Foy.
Aye.
Mr. Woods.
Aye.
Ms. Brown.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. McAnally.
Aye.
And Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Motion carries. Section eight, executive legal and public information. Item eight, A1, is a recommendation regarding adoption of revision of policy 501.01, construction, renovation, and alteration. This item was on last month's work session, has been reviewed by the policy committee and comes from the policy committee, and the boards had a chance to review it. At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Smith. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Davis. Ms. Brown, do you have any comments on this from the policy committee as chair of the committee?
Well, this is a, these are good changes and edits to this policy, and I'd like to thank Ed Watley for his help. Also, Milton contributed quite a bit to this policy, so we feel good about it and strongly recommend it to the board, so thank you.
Thank you for that. And I want to thank you as chair of the policy committee and for the work of the committee and Vice Chair Davis for his contributions and also any coordination that came about from the facilities and infrastructure committee chaired by Chuck Smith. I think this shows how well our committees can work together, and it's a function that's been characteristic of this board throughout its tenure and its governance.
Absolutely.
Any other discussion? Item eight, A1. Seeing none, we'll go to a roll call vote. Ms. Wilkins?
Mr. Thompson.
Aye.
Mr. Mitchell.
Aye.
Ms. Foy.
Aye.
Mr. Woods.
Aye.
Ms. Brown.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. McAnally.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item eight, A2, is a recommendation regarding adoption of proposed policy 510.01, safety and security. Once again, this was on last month's work session. At this time, I'll entertain a motion. Motion, Mr. Davis, a second by Ms. Brown. Now, please correct me if I get things wrong, but the setting here is, can add to a little confusion, and I missed the distinction between the members' voices from time to time. There's a motion in the second discussion.
I just want to thank the committee that has worked on this, that Boone and the team at Jefferson State and did a great job on the additions to this policy, and thank the policy committee as well for their work on this.
Absolutely. That's great. Thank you, Ms. Brown. At this time, we'll move to a vote. Ms. Wilkins?
Mr. Thompson.
Aye.
Mr. Mitchell.
Aye.
Ms. Foy.
Aye.
Mr. Woods.
Aye.
Ms. Brown.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. McAnally.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item eight, A3, is a request for authority to pursue negotiations with the City of Enterprise for the sale of college property for use as recreational facilities. This comes from Enterprise State Community College and was on the work session agenda last month. At this time, I'll entertain a motion on this.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Mitchell. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Smith. Seeing no discussion, we'll move to a vote on the request for Enterprise State Community College to pursue negotiations with the City of Enterprise. Ms. Wilkins, if you please take the vote.
Okay. Mr. Thompson.
Aye.
Mr. Mitchell.
Aye.
Ms. Foy.
Aye.
Mr. Woods.
Aye.
Ms. Brown.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. McAnally.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Motion carries. Item eight, A4, is a resolution concerning the administration of employee deferred compensation plans. This item was not able to be on last month's work session and has come straight to the meeting agenda for just extenuating circumstances that could not be avoided. At this time, I'll ask Mr. David O'Brien to read the resolution, please, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Be it resolved that each of the chancellor and vice chancellor of administration and financial services, each such person and authorized officer, be and each hereby is authorized and directed to take the following actions, as the authorized officer may deem necessary, desirable, advisable, or appropriate in the judgment of the authorized officer, to facilitate the efficient administration of certain tax-deferred retirement plans and deferred compensation plans hereinafter, collectively referred to as the retirement plans separately established by the community and technical colleges, each a sponsoring school under section 403B and section 457 of the Internal Revenue Code and the regulations thereunder, hereinafter collectively referred to as the code. One, execute and deliver such planned documents, amendments, exhibits, and schedules for and on behalf of each sponsoring school, as may be necessary, to bring the governing plan document of each retirement plan, the plan document, into compliance with the code. Two, maintain and administer each existing retirement plan for and on behalf of the retirement plan participants and sponsoring school in accordance with the terms and conditions set forth in the plan document and the applicable requirements of the code, including, but not limited to, the selection and retention of such third-party retirement plan advisors, administrators, record keepers, custodians, accountants, auditors, and legal advisors, as may be necessary, desirable, advisable, or appropriate for purposes of the same. Three, amend, consolidate, or terminate one or more existing retirement plans. Four, establish one or more new retirement plans to be maintained and administered by the chancellor of the Alabama Community College System for the benefit of the employees of one or more sponsoring schools on such terms and conditions as the authorized officer may deem necessary, desirable, advisable, or appropriate. Be it resolved that each of the authorized officers be and each of them hereby is authorized and directed to take all such further actions and to execute and deliver in the name and on behalf of the board or sponsoring school all such further documents and instruments, and to pay all such expenses from retirement plan assets as may be permitted by the code, as they or any of them may deem necessary, desirable, advisable, or appropriate to effectuate or carry out the purposes of all of the foregoing resolutions and the transactions contemplated thereby, and that the taking of each such action, the execution and delivery of each such document or instrument, and the payment of each such expenses shall be conclusive evidence of its necessity or advisability. And be it resolved that all actions taken by any of the authorized officers prior to the date of the foregoing resolutions that are within the authority confirmed thereby are hereby ratified, confirmed, approved, and adopted as actions of the board.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. At this time, I'd like to recognize Blake McAnally, Chair of the Finance and Audit Committee for the Board.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First off, just want to follow up with your comments with respect to the legal department and the efforts made by a lot of folks to get their hands around this matter in a short period of time and providing information to the board that's been very helpful. Mr. O'Brien, thank you, and for all those involved, thank you and your staff. You know, we've, as a board, been together almost five years now, and as we go along, we continue to learn things we don't know. And this is one of those situations where these plans, having been initiated and administered by the colleges outside of the system office, some of them quite a long time ago, regulations have changed, and we find ourselves where we have almost every one of our colleges involved in one of these plans at some level, and some 13 different companies involved. Regulations require that these plans be formalized and filed with the IRS, and we've got about a 90-day window from now to be able to get these things done, and this resolution effectuates that and allows the chancellor and Mr. Helms, Vice Chancellor Helms, to be able to go about getting this done on behalf of the colleges. So I just want to say thank you for the work that's been done and for the studying and catching up on this that the board has done in short time. And also, Mr. Chairman, I would just make a motion that we approve this resolution.
I'd second that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. McAnally, for the work of the committee. There's been a motion and a second. Any discussion or comments from the board? I would take a moment. Chancellor Baker, I know that a lot had to be put together in a short period of time to inform the board, and I want to publicly thank you for that. I think it's very important that the board be fully informed and make informed decisions. I know I'm being redundant with that, but it's the only way I know how to express it. But anyway, thank you for that, Chancellor. Any other discussion, any comments from the board on this item, on this resolution? Seeing none, Ms. Wilkins, will you call the roll for a vote?
Mr. Thompson.
Aye.
Mr. Mitchell.
Aye.
Ms. Foy.
Aye.
Mr. Woods.
Aye.
Ms. Brown.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. McAnally.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Motion carries unanimously. We're now to personnel, Chancellor. Anybody to make?
No.
Add any information for personnel?
This is one of those rare weeks or months, rather. We don't have anyone to announce.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Well, we're to your report, Chancellor, so the floor is yours.
Let me ask, is Rachel on? I think she is. But Rachel has a press release hanging out, if it hasn't already gone out today, and I think it's something that we need to talk about. We need to be, and I talk to the presidents every Tuesday morning in a conference call, and I ask them, it's time we start bragging a little bit about some of the things that are going on. And so her press release is some of that. We've been working diligently with the Health Department, with the governor's office, and many other people, the Hospital Association, the Nursing Home Association, and many others to support in ways that folks don't usually think about, the community college. We've exhausted our supply of ventilators. We had a number that we've contributed to the effort working with their hospitals, our supply of healthcare, just masks, gowns, just name it. We're pretty well exhausted on all of that, but we've been responding in every way that we can, even to the point of we're literally manufacturing some shields for the healthcare workers. We're manufacturing the harnesses and over Southern Union and other kinds of things that are needed that you don't normally think about a college doing, but we have a lot of capability. And I just want to commend our folks. Most of this, they've stepped up without having to be told and made contributions to support the effort to help their community. And I think they deserve a real hand of applause or whatever the case may be, but we're trying to get all of this in the press at this point. I am present on a weekly basis. They are working. My office is, usually there'll be three or four of us here, maybe five at the most, and scattered from one floor to the other, but we are still, everyone's working every day. And I would like for you to know, and I would add this, I would have given almost anything to know that our center indicated that we are planning to be the center of distance learning and aggression, we're moving aggressively to put that program together, but we've done a good job in delivering the general education programs online. I've talked with several of the instructors, I've talked with all of the presidents, and we're making real progress. I do want to mention that we have distributed a memo to each of the schools, particularly related to those programs that require certain hours of lab experience, hand-on lab experience, or clinicals such as in the healthcare, health science programs. We are making arrangements. We have not put anyone off of the payroll, but for those instructors who are responsible for the lab experience, they're being paid, but paid forward for their performance of their lab work at a later date, and they have agreed to do that. I've had one, two, maybe, that had some questions, but everyone has been very accommodating in an effort to try to fill their role and fill the need for the instructional program. So we're moving forward with that, and I just think our people have responded at a level that is even better than I would have anticipated. And I expect that this has been a good experience. A lot of our schools, I would say a lot, several of our schools are being asked by the core engineers to provide space in the parking lot for a staging area so that at some point, if they need to move in and move a lot of equipment into a area, that they would like to have a staging area. I know, Matt, you've got one in Jasper, they've been asking Enterprise to provide that, and there was one in North Alabama, I believe. So we've been working with core of engineers to make sure that's available. It's been a trying time for a lot of people. And I sat down with our workforce leadership yesterday and talked about, it's time we start talking about what can we do to help, once there's an opportunity to help and move forward and provide training and assistance to the smaller and provide training and assistance to the small businesses. You know, almost ninety percent of our revenue that comes in education comes from sales and income tax. Those are the two most immediately affected revenue sources. So we, we're going to have to be very sensitive about how we move forward and do everything we can to help those small businesses. And I think we can do some training, we can do some retraining and a variety of things that they're working on today to try to find out and start communicating. I spoke with Rosemary Elabash who heads up the National Federation of Independent Businesses, primarily small businesses. I've been in communication with Manufacturer Alabama and with the Business Council, so we, we're working to try to be available to help any way we possibly can. The federal legislation. Each, each school is going to receive a certain amount of money based on the formula. The rules by which we expend those funds are still a little fuzzy. I have a group working on that because at some point, and we hope within the next two weeks, money will start coming. That's everything I'm getting out of DC and I think it's close to that. But I want our folks to already have a plan in place for how they're going to spend the money. We have a responsibility, a, a specific portion of the funds is to be used to help students in particular, individual students who for one reason or the other has been disadvantaged by this whole process. So we're going to have to really do our, our job in making sure that we get the money to the point where it needs to be. The office employees here have worked every day. And, you know, this catches us at a real critical time. It's the time we would be enrolling new students, we would be recruiting at the high schools. We're still doing that online and we're getting in touch with as many students as we can. But it also catches us at a time when we are the second tranche of schools are moving to the ERP, to the banner system, which is a major, major effort. And we've been meeting with the IT and then Ben and Karen and working with the tier one schools who already have people who have the expertise in going through the enrollment and those kinds of things. And I've asked Ben if he would, heard about the kind of response we're getting from our schools, I, I would tell you, it's frustrating for them because they are in a period of time when they normally would be in training. They would be in classes, their staff would be preparing for a lot of the things we're doing. We can't collect in that, so we've been trying to conduct training as best we can, but it doesn't, it still doesn't satisfy the need. So we, we are taking a little different approach and I've asked Ben if he would explain that.
Thank you, Chancellor. I hope everyone can hear me okay, I'll try to speak up. The, we began working with the colleges last week to address some concerns that were brought up with I guess staffing levels and support levels across the board, so we've engaged fifteen of the functional experts from our cohort one schools, the nine schools that went live last summer and the accountable, financial aid, finance, human resources and payroll and the student area. Those individuals will be providing direct, one-on-one and a functional support to the schools that are going live this summer. We've also transitioned our training to online and virtual using Zoom and other technologies. We've added additional losing resources, since those individuals aren't traveling, they've been able to devote more time to the project as well. And so instead of them being unavailable on Mondays and Fridays while they're traveling, they're available five days a week and working with our schools and our, our staff to support these that is moving forward and our staff has been working through different options and opportunities to support our schools in multiple ways, including using pre-registration functionality and existing software and, and moving other pieces forward, so I think, you know, I'm working with the, the schools in cohort two and, and our honestly the the sharing of resources from the cohort one schools, that, that response has been wonderful and everybody's pulled together and I think we're going to be able to move forward in a productive and efficient way given the, the massive.
Okay, any question? I would like to also mention the legislature, they, they met, agreed to meet again on the twenty eighth. I don't know exactly what their plan is nor do they at this point, there, there's some thought about passing a budget. I would expect and from conversations with the budget chairs, I've been in communication with and with the governor's office. I would expect that our expectation today, and I, that's kind of where I am operationally, look at a budget that is probably level funding with the current year. If they pass a budget, I think that is what will happen. I think they will come back at some point and probably based upon what they see as far as the impact of the situation on, on the revenue, probably make some adjustments. I have spoken with the chairman of the Budget Committee in the Senate who is the sponsor or was to be the sponsor of the legislation for the bond issue. He fully intends, if they come back in another session, to adjust budgets and do other kinds of things, that, that bond issue in his mind is still an active possibility. I, 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 I think the budget is going to, the, the education fund is going to take a significant hit, however, I would tell you, we went into this environment, in an environment where we had over three hundred million dollars in a reserve fund for the state as a whole for the education fund. And they tapped that and we were able to distribute the monthly distribution earlier than we thought we were going to be able to. Our schools are, have managed well, I think they're still managing well. We reviewed some of that, particularly with the finance committee and all of you. And I, they, they've been very responsible in the way they're managing today. We're going to continue doing that and I think we can get through this without any major, major problems. Don't want to suggest that we're plush, I'm just suggesting that we can manage this piece. And I think that's important. With that, Mr. Chairman, I think that, that's about what I have to talk.
Thank you Chairman for that, I mean Chancellor for that, that report and for your thoroughness and for your management of the system under these, these really tough and challenging circumstances, we'll, we'll get through this. We have scheduled our next regular meeting, May thirteenth, twenty twenty, in our boardroom in Montgomery. Depending on the circumstances and if we need to continue practicing social distancing for the safety of everyone, that's what we will do and we will meet again remotely via this particular vehicle of Zoom. Any comments from board members?
Stay safe, everyone.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just say thanks to the many involved to make this happen and to make it happen so well, it's seamless.
Absolutely.
That emotion, appreciate everybody and just stay safe and well, everybody.
Yes, and I want to say Milton, thank you for that very great devotional this morning that was very well needed and articulated here during Holy Week and thank y'all for what you're doing for the hospitals. Keep us in your prayers.
Anyone else? Lord, thank you so much. Vice Chair Davis, thank you for that very timely and poignant encouraging word and prayer. Board members, I appreciate each of you so much and appreciate your commitment and your making time to join this. Chancellor, thank you again for your leadership, thanks to your staff. Too many people to mention, but you know who they are. And lest we forget, Happy Easter, everybody. At this time, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Suppose we stand adjourned.